We were stalling a little bit because we've got two student reps who aren't here yet. So we're going to rearrange the order here a little bit. But in the meantime, welcome to the Tuesday, September 19th, 2023 Board of Education Meeting. We have all trustees present. We always begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to stand and join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I should note that Superintendent Macheski is on vacation this week. And so we have Deputy Superintendent Request sitting in. So we're all going to give him a really hard time while he's up here. Okay, so we'd like to begin with recognition. And we were going to start with an introduction to our new student representatives for our board meetings, but we don't have everybody here yet. So we're going to move on to the All-State Athletes Spring Sports. Mr. Fultcher? And we have certificates to give out.
I think we're a little short with our list, too.
Oh, okay.
We can move forward.
Do you want to move? We can move to our mission moment if you want. Do you want to give folks a little more time?
If you're able to do that.
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
Give our students time to be here in case they're on their way.
Do if our spelling bee star present?
He's present, I saw him.
Okay. Good evening.
All right, well, good evening, members of the board. Deputy Superintendent, look nice in that chair. Members of the audience, it's my pleasure to be here with you tonight. I'm joined by one of our students, Aryan Ketkar. Aryan is an eighth grade student at Baker who came to us by way of Barnard Elementary. He's an exemplary student and a talented musician. He plays the bass clarinet in our band and is a self-taught keyboard player. Aryan enjoys math, loves to read and write, and it should be no surprise to all of you, he happens to be an excellent speller with a photographic memory.
We've seen him before.
And a passion for words, because they added that in the competition, you know, for definitions. I had a chance to get to know Aryan and his family during his tenure at Baker. And most notably, it was his sixth grade year where his family expressed an interest in bringing the bee back to Baker as we were transitioning into in-person learning. I've had a chance to speak with Aryan candidly about his passion for the spelling bee and the things that inspired him. And he shared with me that he's been fascinated with words since the age of two. He's been doing this a long time, a seasoned veteran. And he has a passion that helped him start with competitive spelling. At five years old, Aryan started competing in the North-South Foundation. And he's been pursuing winning the entire National Spelling Bee for several years. And with each passing year, he progressively gets better. Last year, Aryan went to Washington, DC as the final Michigan speller left in the Scripps National Spelling Bee. Aryan made it to Washington by successfully winning the Baker Bee, sweeping through all of the competition during the Oakland County Bee, and then dominated at the National Bee, making it all the way to the finals, where he was one of the final five remaining spellers out of 231 original students competing from across the country.
That's impressive.
Yeah.
And while he didn't finish in first place, Aryan inspired the entire One Troy community. He showcased an impressive competition spirit and dazzled the judges with his skill on a national stage. So this year, Aryan will have another chance to win it all. We look forward to his future success and can't wait to see him compete. And regardless of what happens next, I'm proud of his accomplishment and honored to be his principal. And without further ado, it's my pleasure to introduce all of you to Aryan Ketkar again.
Do we have a certificate for him? He's, Mr. Cross isn't kidding. We were tracking you in Washington. We, all of us were watching, so you were inspiring to everybody. We were rooting you on.
Let's go take a picture. Is it okay if your family comes up?
Okay, looks like, um, let's see if I get a thumbs up from Tim or whether we should do the... I think we'll go ahead and do the student introductions. Okay, we'll do student reps and then we'll jump to the All-State Athletes then. All right, well, I am pleased to introduce our four new student reps for the year, one of which I have worked with already for a year, so I know him. And the other three, I've heard lots of good things about. So I don't know who wrote your introductions, whether you wrote them or someone else did, but I'm going to read them, verbatim here. Tegan Pruitt is a boomerang. He's down there. As a senior and a four-year veteran of Troy College and Career High School, Tegan knows that regardless of his plans and aptitude to fly, he will choose to come back. If the measure of a school is the growth of its students, Tegan is the metric by which this school should be judged. He's a leader, boisterous, and enthusiastic when the student body needs energy, but then quiet and subtle when a light touch is best. He believes in TCC, its missions and goals. He's a young man dedicated to service to his friends, to his family, to his classmates, and to his school. Tegan has excelled academically and now leads classroom discussions, elevating intellectual discourse, and has pioneered TCC's two Advanced Placement classes. The teacher, students, and TCC mission have inspired Tegan, much like the boomerang, to soar from TCC, attend college, study English Language Arts, earn his teaching certificate, and then return home to teach at his alma mater. TCC will certainly welcome his triumphant return. So welcome to Tegan. And then I have, Narada Albies is not here. She's going to become our International Academy East Representative. Narada is a junior at the International Academy East, where she is pursuing an international baccalaureate diploma. Narada has been a part of the Superintendent Student Advisory Board since freshman year and will be serving on the SSAB Executive Committee this year. She's Vice President of Student Government and a former state officer for the Michigan Health Occupation Students of America Association, where she helped facilitate statewide leadership conferences and traveled across the nation for leadership training. Narada has completed over 350 hours of community service and is dedicated to making a positive difference in her community. She's been recognized with the President's Volunteer Service Gold Award for the past two years. A former Barnard Blue Jay and Baker Bobcat, she has been a part of the Troy School District throughout her educational journey. This year, as the IAE Student Representative on the Troy Board of Education, Narada looks forward to giving back to the school district that has given her the resources to succeed in academia and beyond. Next, we have Marion William from Athens High School.
Marlene.
Mar- Marleian, I'm sorry, Marleian. Marleian William is a senior at Athens High School and a first-generation Egyptian-American who serves as President of the National Honor Society, co-president of Key Club, and co-president of the Superintendent Student Advisory Board. Marleian is passionate about special education, has been a member of the United Basketball Team for the past three years. She's also a member of the TSD Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Panel. Outside of school, Marleian is an active member of St. Mark Kopic Orthodox Church, where she teaches Sunday School and participates in choir. She hopes to pursue a dual degree in international relations and economics with language concentrations in both Spanish and Arabic. One day, she would like to work for the United Nations Foreign Service and work with the United Nations, specifically furthering educational progress for women and girls in Egypt, as well as in the Middle East and North African region. She's honored to be representing Athens this year and is looking forward to further expanding her leadership. Welcome. And last, and certainly not least, Jayla Turner is a senior at Troy High School. She is a wonderful student who currently serves as Director of Communications for the Troy High School Student Government Executive Board. She's also a member of Mr. Ronconi's Principal Student Advisory Board. Jayla serves as Head Mediator for the Peer Mediation Group and is an active member of the Black Student Union Club. During her high school career, Jayla has significantly contributed to the Troy High School Yearbook Program. She's a varsity athlete in both cheerleading and softball and has played basketball, as well as varsity track and field. Jayla's objective as a Troy School District student this year is to continue to strengthen bonds across the district in hopes of uniting the Troy community. So welcome, Jayla. Okay, now we can move to our All-State Athletes. Mr. Fultcher?
Thanks for the flexibility there. Mr. Schmidt, Deputy West, Board of Education members, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to recognize, help recognize our spring, high school spring sport, All-State Athletes. This past spring, we had 13 high school students between our two high schools who were recognized as All-State Athletes, first or second team. And those students obviously have put in a lot of time, energy, hard work themselves. Their parents have supported them through this process, as well as their coaches have provided some great teaching and learning for these students to be successful in their athletic endeavors. So with the 13, because it's now fall, quite a few of our student athletes from last spring have graduated and have moved on to new endeavors. I'd like to go through and read all of the student athletes, each of the 13 names, to recognize them. And then we have a few here in the audience with us tonight. Those of you who are here, when your name is called, please come up. You'll get a certificate from Mr. Schmidt and Dr. Wilson. We'll get a picture of you. Mom and dad, if you're here, feel free to come on up and take a picture as well. Okay, and again, when I read the, when I read the grades that these students were in, this is from the last school year, from the spring. We will start with Krish Gupta, who was a senior at Troy High on the boys' track team. Krish was All-State in both the Open 400 and the 4x400 team. And let me also recognize Krish's coach, Mike Ryman, who's here in the audience. So thanks, Coach Ryman. And Krish is not able to be with us tonight so far. Next, we have Vishwa Ravashankar, who was a junior at Troy High last spring. Vishwa was All-State in the 3200. Vishwa is here. Vishwa. Next, we have Noah Yi, who was a senior at Troy High on the boys' track team. Noah was part of the All-State 4x400 team. And Noah is at U of M right now, so he's not able to be with us. But congratulations, Noah. Another member of that All-State 4x400 team was Sanjay Vijay, senior from Troy High, who is also at U of M, not able to be with us tonight. Another member of that 4x400 team is Darius Whiteside II, who was a senior last spring. Darius is at Grand Valley State this fall, playing football. So congratulations, Noah. Next, we have Aaron Humphrey, junior last year, who played girls' lacrosse for the Troy High School Colts. And Aaron was second-team All-State. Aaron is with us. Also here is the coach of the Troy High Girls' Lacrosse Team, Ms. Carly Schwartz. Coach Schwartz. Next, we have Grace Zhu, Grace Zhu, who was on the girls' tennis team. Grace was part of a doubles team that was All-State. Their coach is Brian Miska. Grace graduated from Troy High last year and is unable to be with us tonight. But congratulations, Grace. And next, we have Grace's partner, Nika Tananko, who was a junior last spring. Nika is part of that All-State doubles team. She is here with dad, so congratulations, Nika. Next, we have Varsha Penam, let me try that again. Varsha Penamali. And I don't believe Varsha is here tonight. Varsha was also part of a doubles tennis team from Troy High School last spring, All-State. So congratulations, Varsha. Vienna Thiu was Varsha's partner in that All-State doubles team from Troy High. Vienna graduated last spring, so she is not able to be with us tonight. Congratulations, Vienna. Lizzie Boltnick was a senior on the Troy High Girls' Soccer Team last spring. Lizzie was first-team All-State, as well as on the Soccer Dream Team, which is quite an accomplishment, quite an accomplished player. And Lizzie is now playing soccer for Bowling Green State University. Next, we have Kabitha Gouda. Kabitha was a junior last year at Athens on the girls' tennis team. Kabitha was All-State in singles, and she is here. And finally, we have Lauren Dionker, a junior from Athens last spring on the girls' soccer team. Lauren was first state, first-team All-State as well. And I don't believe Lauren is here with us tonight. So congratulations to Lauren. So once again, we had 13 high school students recognized. Four of them are able to be with us tonight. Congratulations. Best wishes and best luck this year. And let's give it one more round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Fultcher. Okay, that takes us to Student Spotlight with Mr. Butcher, I believe. There he is. We have...
All right. Good evening, Board of Education.
Good evening.
Deputy West. As always, we appreciate the support and opportunity to share student work with you all here tonight. On the day I first met Mira Eyre, now an eighth-grade student at Bowlin Park Middle School, one thing became clear: she is a huge podcast fan. In fact, I bet there's no one else in this room who listens to as many podcasts as she does. So we're testing things out in the studio, microphones and such. We're talking. I asked her, what do you want to do? And you know she had some ideas. So one of them was to produce a podcast episode for the district about our instrumental music program encompassing grades five through 12. Sounds like a lot of work, right? Well, she did it anyway. The next thing I knew, this middle school student conducted a total of 10 separate interviews of students and teachers, resulting in two and a half hours of recorded material that she would then proceed to spend the next four months combing through and scripting and weaving and editing until finally, what we had in front of us was what I think is simply the best creative project I have ever witnessed a middle school student produce. It is because of all the time she volunteered for this that we now have an incredible resource telling us about the student experience from our instrumental music program. How about we give her a hand for that? As I wrap up, 15 years ago this month, September of 2008, I started eighth grade here in the Troy School District. And that is when I first started uploading videos to YouTube. Listen to me, you're never going to see any of those videos. For good reason. When I reflect on the start of my own journey, and now today, 15 years later, I look at this eighth-grade student standing next to me, I know I see the beginning of something really special. If she continues on this path, then great things lie ahead. Already at the age of 13, Mira has produced a work of audio storytelling on par with that of the wider podcast industry. And that is why, instead of being like me and hiding my old goofy eighth-grade projects, we are here to celebrate something exceptional that this eighth-grader has already accomplished. So congratulations, Mira. I'm excited for the years to come.
For a long time, Troy has placed an emphasis on the whole student, whether that be arts, sports, or other things. Performing arts have been a big part of the Troy School District for a long time. So what does this program offer? What is the lasting impact of music education on students and teachers? Hi, I'm Mira Eyre, and I sat down with students and teachers today to answer this question.
I'm Janie Sorensen. This is my third year teaching in Troy schools. I teach fifth-grade band for all 12 of our elementary schools. I really try to make my classroom a space where students can express themselves. And that's difficult to do as a 10-year-old on a saxophone that you don't know how to play. But I really think it's possible. They feel safe in my classes and they are able to be silly.
My name is Rhian Inteslin, and I teach sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade orchestra at Bowlin Park Middle School. I feel like the goals change every year based on the groups that come in. I mean, obviously, we want them to be, you know, great musicians. We want them to understand musical literacy, terminology, blah, blah, blah. But I think really, deep down, we want them to have an appreciation for music, whether that's in band, choir, orchestra, you know, if they're in a drama class, some kind of appreciation for the fine arts, for performing arts. Getting down to the base level, that's really what we're going for.
My name is Brian Nutting, Director of Bands at Troy High School.
This just came to me. I feel like I remember someone saying that Troy High has kind of shifted their mindset from being more of a competition band to now working on not doing that and playing and performing. Is that tied to relationships and the culture of the band?
You nailed it, yes. We don't aim to win more trophies because we have shelves and shelves of them. We don't aim to win more medals because the kids have plenty of those on an individual level. We aim to make every performance greater than the last. And as a result, we tend to win when we're in a competition setting or exceed the standards of many others by focusing on the right thing, which is individual growth and development and teamwork and community.
And thank you to everybody I interviewed, all the teachers and the students and people who are my friends. I truly was inspired by each and every one of you.
So that, of course, is just a two-minute preview of the full episode, which you can find now on TSD World Class Podcast, about a half hour long. So it's worth the listen. It's great work. I want to give Mira an opportunity to say a few words. And then if there's any comments or questions, of course, as well. Thank you.
Uh-oh, didn't know that, did you? It's okay.
Well, I guess thank you to the Troy School District for giving me this opportunity because I started listening to podcasts during COVID. And like, I love listening to podcasts. Like, it is my form of binging television. And so, like, I will binge podcasts. So I, like, I didn't think that it was possible. And then I walked into Creative Guild last year, and I just, like, saw that it could be possible for me to do this. And then, like, the whole experience of getting to interview teachers and go to Troy High and interview Mr. Nutting was really great. And I had a lot of fun doing this.
Was there anything that was harder than you thought it was going to be?
Yeah, so I, so in Mr. Butcher's audio file, the podcast said instrumental music. And it was like, had a dash just in Mira Eyre, and it said May 2023, yeah. And then that became June 2023, and then July 2023. And then in August, we were like, August 2023. It's, and then it became September, and then we're like, not October. So it took a lot more time than I anticipated because it was like, the process was, was like, I had to go through all the interviews and I had to listen. And then I had to cut and then go back and do, like, give notes on that. And so it was, the editing process was much harder than I thought.
Oh, yeah.
Who was the most interesting person that you got to interview?
Mr. Nutting. Like, the way he articulated things was just, like, so great. And like, I think that the high school band program is really interesting because I've seen a lot of people who really love Troy High's band program. So, yeah, it was much interesting.
Okay, good. Any other questions for him?
Yeah, I have one. Are there, what areas do you want to go into when you are doing podcasts, other than this music program?
So I want to do, I think that the next podcast I want to do is like a true crime podcast because I like true crime podcasts.
My, my last question for you is, what is the coolest podcast that nobody else knows about? That, since you've listened to all of them, is there one that you'd recommend that no one? And when, when you say, have, have you listened to this? Everyone goes, never heard of it. Is there one you really like that? Oh, there is, okay.
Well, there, there's one that made the charts.
Okay.
But then it like popped. I listened to Scamanda, and it's about this lady who, like, faked having cancer for 10 years. It's a true crime podcast. And it's like how there was this journalist who literally had to be like a stalker and who was like put in court. And she literally was, it was insane. She had this journal about every, because Amanda Scamanda would write blog posts. And so she, like, would lie about her cancer in these blog posts. So she would have to comb through the blog posts, and she had like this thorough record book. And Amanda actually sued her, which you find out later. And then, like, but she was, like, protected by the press. It was really interesting.
Ah, okay. Okay, great, thank you. We have a, oh, go ahead. Did someone, oh, we've got a certificate for you, so we'll come. Okay. And then last, from this section. Oh, no, actually, we have two, two things. We want to, next is recognition. We want to address requests from the National, on behalf of National Suicide Prevention Month. Oakland County Health Network has asked school boards throughout Oakland County to partner with them by approving a proclamation for September as National Suicide Prevention Month at their September Board meetings. May I have a resolution, please? Dr. Wilson?
Whereas September is known as National Suicide Prevention Month and is intended to raise awareness surrounding suicide prevention resources available in the community. And whereas World Suicide Prevention Day is observed each year on September 10th. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone, regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, each year more than 48,000 people die by suicide. And whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death for people 10 to 34 years of age, the fourth-leading cause of death among people 35 to 54, and the eighth-leading cause of death among people 55 to 64 years of age. And whereas organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness and National Suicide Prevention Lifeline work to help individuals in crisis and provide resources to shed light on this highly stigmatized topic. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are silently fighting our own battles. And whereas OCHN is committed to being a zero-suicide organization and cultivating a network of providers who engaged in the zero-suicide philosophy. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oakland Community Health Network hereby recognizes September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Month. OCHN calls on our individuals, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, faith-based organizations, and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of suicide prevention and the need for appropriate and accessible services to assist... and the need for appropriate and accessible services to assist individuals in crisis.
Support.
I think of resolution by Dr. Wilson, supported by Mr. Hoff. Does anyone have additional comments relating to this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes unanimously. Okay, and then our last area of recognition, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. West.
Yes, it is my honor and privilege to present this next recognition to our own, our very own Board of Education. Tonight, we are pleased to present the Troy School District Board of Education with several honors that we received, that were received this past year as a result of their commitment to excellence in governance. This evening, we are recognizing Board Trustee Vitell Anay for achieving the Award of Distinction, which requires the completions of Levels One and Two, total of four Advanced CBA classes, and a minimum of two hundred and eight education credits. We are also recognizing President Carl Schmidt for receiving the Master Platinum Award, which requires the completion of Levels One through Five, total of nineteen Advanced classes, and a minimum of eight hundred and thirteen education credits. Representatives from MASB came to the district to present Board Trustee Nancy Philip Hart with the President's Award. This award is given to those who have completed Levels One through Six, total of twenty-nine Advanced Level classes, and a minimum of one thousand three hundred and eighty-three education credits. We would also like to congratulate the entire board for earning the Standards of Excellence Award. All of these awards place the Troy Board of Education among a handful of other Michigan school districts governing bodies that have demonstrated a true commitment to student achievement and exemplary leadership. The Troy community is fortunate to have seven board members who are so committed to the concept of lifelong learning and positive policymaking. And just going off script, on behalf of our superintendent and on behalf of our administration, really, I think our staff and our community, we do thank you for your commitment, often, sometimes thankless. But we do know and we do benefit from, from all of your service. And we are gratefully, we are grateful for it. So thank you all for the hard work that you put in each and every month to make this the school district it is.
Thank you, Mr. West. Okay, at that point, we have finished our recognition. We're going to take a five-minute recess. So if you're here for recognition and you want to sneak out, this is the perfect time to do that. If you'd like to stay for the rest of our exciting business, we'll resume that in about five minutes. Sorry, I looked at that. We can go and get started, let's say. Okay, so we move to additions and deletions.
There are none this evening?
All right, thank you. Public communication on agenda items, there are none, correct? Okay, that moves us to the general consent agenda. This consists of the, A, the minutes of the August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three Board of Education meeting, B, the minutes of the August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three closed session meeting, C, the treasures report from July of twenty-twenty-three, D, the Athens High School Girl Gymnastics Cooperative Agreement, E, Troy College and Career High School Course Catalogue, F, furniture for Central Office and Services Building Board Rooms, and G, the cancellation of the November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three Board of Education meeting. May I have a resolution, please, Mr. Hoff?
Be it therefore resolved that the Troy Board of Education takes action to approve items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G of the consent agenda.
Support.
I, I was going to say, I already wrote it in. I wrote it in. I'm ahead of you. Okay, so we have a resolution by Mr. Hoff, supported by Mr. Hopt. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please. I do want to, actually, I want to call out the cancellation of the November meeting. It's because we've, we've pushed off the workshop by a week because of the election week. And given the way Thanksgiving falls, we'd be having a meeting every week. So we're going to do, we'll do the workshop for November, and then we'll do the workshop for December, and then anything we need to settle, we'll do in the, any votes will be in the December meeting. And, and if, if there turns out to be something we need to have an agreement on by the end of November, we'll call a special meeting on the same night as the workshop. Okay, just so everybody kind of knows the plan there. Okay, so all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. Okay, that takes us to personnel. Mr. Pagel. There you are. I didn't see you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. West, Mr. Schmidt, members of the board. Tonight is a kind of a culmination, a celebration, if you will, of our hiring process, which I'm proud to report is winding down here for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. It's a process that, that really begins each year shortly after the new year, probably in February, and has several phases to, which I've included in, in our summary report for you. Phase one really is a recruitment phase, which includes a number of job fair visits, partnerships with some of our university partners around the state. And we've attempted to expand that in recent years as well in pursuit of the best candidates for, for our school district. Following that, a lot of our staff is involved in, in the, in the next phases, which include a screening phase of applicants. You know, once we, once we identify our retirements and our open positions, those are posted on our website, through Oakland Schools, and through other companies such as Indeed and some of the other affiliates around, around the state. And then we begin our process of, of screening and interviewing. And then there's typically a building performance task, which is usually for our teaching staff in the form of teaching a lesson with our, with our students, sometimes our summer school, school students, as these go on throughout the summer. So very, very proud of the inclusion of so many of our staff members or building principals in, in this process. So in addition to, to the summary that I provided for you, I have a few statistics that I want to share. We have eleven administrators this year that are either brand-new to the system or in new positions. Yours truly included. We have, we hired, and I never would have anticipated this, in the spring, once we saw our retirements, but we ended up hiring sixty-one new Troy School District teachers this year. In your packet, you see their, their bios and their pictures. It's a, it's a wonderful group. It's a, it's a very large class, much larger than we anticipated. And much of that speaks to the movement that's happened around, around the state with the teacher shortage and, and the, and the competition for, for qualified teaching staff around the, around the state and around the country. And so very, very proud of, of, of this class. With, with this group of sixty-one, which we are going to have for your consideration here in just a few moments, nine of them are former Troy School District graduates, so really excited about those. We have thirty-three of, of our teachers of that sixty-one that have educational experience beyond a bachelor's degree. So we've got some, some, some highly trained folks. And this year, probably the, the most experienced class of folks that we've brought in since I've been here in Troy, with a total of two hundred and sixty-seven years of previous teaching experience as a, as a total group. And that does include a number of, of new folks right out of, of school. So you can, you can imagine the diversification and the experience of folks that we've brought in from, from across the state and, and beyond. And so we're, we're very excited about, about the class. Very proud of our, of our team. You know, a lot goes into, into the multiple phases that are now finally winding down. We're down to just a few, a few positions. And as I compare us to our colleagues around the county in particular, we, we are in wonderful shape in terms of our, in terms of our staffing. And I would be remiss if I did not add this one other point. When I talk about the phases, our, it has been a tradition in Troy that our final phase of our hiring process has been to meet directly and personally with our superintendent of schools. I've been in multiple school districts in my, in my career, and I have never been in one where the superintendent is so hands-on in terms of this, the hiring process. Of these sixty-one teachers, I believe that Dr. Macheski met with fifty-eight of them personally. And, and the other two, I think he was out of town for. But that, that is remarkable in comparison to many places where, where I've, I've come from. So before I present them for your consideration, do you have any questions about our, about our process? And about this, this particular class?
Any questions? Go ahead. Did you have?
No.
Oh, yeah. I just have a question about who's not on the list, which is, at this stage of the game, how many openings do we still have?
So we have, we have, we have two social work openings. We have one science opening at the middle school level at Smith. And we have two special education positions, teaching positions, middle school that are, that are open. I'm sorry, one elementary, one middle school that are open at this time. We are engaging in interviews and have conducted some. We're, we're just not to the final, final phase of that yet, but we will continue. We do have some, some wonderfully qualified folks that are, that are teaching those positions right now as substitute teachers. And part of that is the beginning of our own, grow your own staffing process here within the, within the district, where we've got folks who have been par educators here in the district and who are in teaching programs right now, soon to be certified, and they are getting some of their required hours in with us while teaching these classes through, through permitted licenses.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. All right, I don't see any other questions, so.
So with that, we have, I have a recommendation for you on behalf of our team. It's recommended that the Board of Education approves the issuance of probationary contracts to the, to the teachers listed, the sixty-one individuals listed on your, on your master list there for the class of twenty-three, twenty-four school district, two school year.
Thank you. You're being asked to approve the hire of sixty-one new people. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Aliish?
Be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education takes action to approve the aforementioned personnel recommendations as stated above.
Support.
You're just, you're torturing me. Okay, all right. Resolution, Ms. Aliish, supported by Ms. Anay. Any questions or comments about the new hires? We're just excited. They've all decided to join us. And thank you for, I know it's tremendous amount of work involved in this. And I know that the, the sort of free agent environment we're seeing right now with teachers put you behind the eight ball for their entire summer. So we apologize on behalf of the board to your family for the time that you were not home for the summer. But thank you and your team for a lot of hard work over the summer. All, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Pagel.
Thanks all for your part in making this a wonderful place to work. Thank you.
Okay. I've covered everything there. So we go to curriculum? Okay. Ms. DiPlato, hello.
Mr. West and Dr. Mr. Schmidt and members of the board, thanks for having us tonight. I'm excited to present an update on professional learning that took place in the district over the summer. Oftentimes, summer is a nice relaxing time for families. And I think some don't know how busy it is here in the Troy School District. The months of August gearing up for a school year are certainly some of the high points. And we're able to talk a little bit about that throughout these next few slides. So our professional learning over the summer, we have a goal. Part of our, one of our pillars represents building capacity. So building the abilities in connection with our parents and families, with our teachers, with our staff, with our students. And over the next few slides, we'll talk really about how we've leaned into that building of capacity. Throughout the summer, we spent time looking at curriculum development. We often meet with our administrators, so we have a kickoff. We also have a reflection time in, in June, once school's quiet down a little bit, as we plan for the next year. Our cabinet has some time to come together and set goals. And then we focus, we turn our focus to our curriculum and preparing for the next school year. The TSD Literacy Project has been underway here in the district well before my tenure here, something that has been celebrated for years. I believe Chris mentioned at our workshop that it was about fifteen years underway here in Troy. It originally started at the elementary school, but we are thrilled because it has extended into our middle schools and high schools, all the way up into tenth grade, where teachers have been focused on workshop model in the, in the, in the ELA classroom and responsive teaching. So you can see some images captured there. Our preschool teachers were not left out this summer. They've been coming together. This is the seventh summer of their convening, also focused on literacy and mathematics in their learning. Over fifty staff members came together and gave up their time to work together and build their knowledge to prepare for the school year. We had a new mathematics institute that took place this year. The focus, it went actually from kindergarten through eighth grade, and the focus was on building thinking classrooms. So building thinking classrooms is really the pedagogical approach that fits well with our new curriculum in our mathematics classrooms, where we're talking about how we build connection in student learners. So it was a nicely attended event. I will tell you that much of the learning that came out of this summer institute is being seen in the classrooms as we kick off the school year, and we are hearing peer-to-peer sharing across our classrooms. Our principal retreats and kickoffs allow us to reflect on how the, the school year ended and things that we hope for going into the next year. We set up what we call our Big Rocks in thinking about the, the school year. Those Big Rocks align very closely with our vision, mission, and values. One of our areas of focus really is MTSS and our structures to support students across the district. And we did spend quite a bit of time talking about that. We also talked about the bond and our first, our, our first few projects that we're taking on. So in furniture, the, the, as you're very well aware, our six elementary schools who are getting ready to, they're currently piloting furniture and getting ready for furniture to be put in place next summer. And then the other six playgrounds, so some really great work taking place across our elementaries. And then our Smith Design Project was well underway this summer as well. New teacher orientation is always an exciting time. And as, you know, John just said, we had quite a full house for new teacher orientation. And that is capped off by a bus tour led by Dr. Macheski. So it was a nice, hot, sweaty day. It always tends to be. We cram all those teachers on a school bus, and we all remember what that was like. Our, our August welcome back to staff is an incredible experience. And I can't give enough kudos to Natalie Heasbrook and the Teaching and Learning Team that really put together the learning for our teachers as we get ready for the school year to start. Our keynote speaker really focusing on establishing a sense of belonging in our schools. And that has been something that we have been focusing on as we've kicked off the school year. Our summer learning didn't stop with adults. We had quite a few students engaged across the district. Our summer program goals have always been to be flexible, to meet students' needs where they are, to work with our family, to engage students in learning across the district. Our Troy Summer Learning Lab was, this is the second year of the Troy Summer Learning Lab. And this is Alana, who's here, is actually one of our administrators, who has led that up over the last two years, also our principal at Troy College and Career High School as her full-time job. But we had over a hundred and twelve students from all four of our middle schools and twenty-one staff members. And I did share during the workshop with you, but I think one of the greatest things that comes out of the Troy Summer Learning Lab is students get to pick something they're passionate about and pursue it. And the adults and the teachers who are working with them get to be a part of supporting the child's vision. And there's a lot of passion and engagement in that because there's not standards that have to be met, but there's inspiration and empowerment around a design cycle. And that kind of free sense of learning is really invigorating, and we saw that this summer. And we're actually very excited because we, our grant funds that run this will allow us to run it again next summer. So we're really excited about that. We ran our Title I Summer Opportunities at Morrison Elementary School. And I know Chris spoke with a little bit more about this at our, at our workshop. Our summer programs for multilingual learners with our ELD program ran in two different, in three different spaces at Morrison and Troy Union for our K-seven kiddos. And you can see here who we served and what the structure of that program looked like. And then it was extended into Bolin for our eighth grade through twelfth grade students. And the eighth grade through twelfth grade students did a lot of learning in our community. And so I think if you, you see highlighted there, the visits into the community through the DIA, Greenfield Village, the Detroit Zoo, and so on, allow our students to really be integrated and, and ask those questions in real time, right? And really work together through that. Our high school summer school also took place this past summer. We had quite a few students who were enrolled. You can see in the first few bullets, we had our NCET High School Summer School, which is just PE. That took place at Athens High School, and we served more than two hundred students in that summer PE. Students like to get PE out of the way in the summer so that they have more room in their schedule to be able to take collectives. And then our virtual enrollment, we had over sixteen hundred classes with over eleven hundred students taking virtual classes. So this is also an area where students are looking to, for the most part, in those numbers, those are students who are looking to take something and kind of check, check that box for that credit so that they have space for something else. The numbers at the bottom, the credit recovery numbers, which is the one hundred and twenty-nine students and the two hundred and forty-eight classes, those are credit recovery for students who took a class and were unsuccessful. The COVID credit recovery, it's tagged as COVID there because we started this when we had COVID access dollars to use to be able to pay for this. And that, that is the funding that we have used over the past three summers to be able to provide students access to credit recovery at no cost to them.
Also this year?
Also this year, yep. And then stuck in the middle there is our middle school honors bridge program. bridge program, um, and that is the program that existed previously for students to be able to jump from the, the, um, um, regular sixth grade math class into the honors seven, eight. So that's what that course represents there. And then our special education, um, summer programs continued as well. So very much modeling what we've had in the past to be able to support our students, um, and the needs that they had as, um, as the summer progressed. So I think overall, we're very pleased with the opportunities that we have in this district, whether it be through grant funding or just, um, meticulous structure to be able to engage our community, um, our, and our, and our staff as they continue to learn.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Go ahead. Dr. Philipart?
Um, could you, just because, you know, we made the commitment to the community that we were, would certainly be focusing, um, teacher P D to prepare them for the new math curriculum. Could you just talk, I, I know you talked a little bit to us in the workshop, but just for the benefit of the community at large, um, can you talk a little bit more about that P D, who took it and, you know?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely, Nancy. Thank you for asking that question. The, um, professional development that's listed on the slide that I just showed was really about the pedagogical approach, so I'll just go back to that slide when we talked about learning, um, building learning, thinking classrooms. Um, this took place, um, and had, uh, teachers K-eight who were willing to come in over the summer and learn, um, and focus and reflect on this book. But as we've started the school year, we've had, um, very structured and intentional professional learning for our teachers in mathematics. So in partnership with Bridges for K-five and with illustrative math for six through eight, we've had staff members from their teams come to work with our teachers, and we've had job embedded professional development already off the ground across the district. Today was the first middle school job embedded professional development with the eighth grade team, but the last two weeks, we've been focused on elementary and getting them off the ground and job embedded around math. So some people might say, well, what does job embedded mean? Um, well, it means that the team, that, for an example, the eighth grade math team today got together in a classroom with a staff developer and worked through a lesson with students in the room, and they would stop and talk about how is this lesson taking place? What moves am I making as a teacher? How are the students responding? What are the students' needs? How am I adapting my teaching in order to be able to meet the needs of my students? And that is an ongoing commitment that we have throughout the course of this year for a teacher's professional development around mathematics.
Great.
It's very similar to the model that we have used in the past with E L A in our partnership with Teachers College.
Right. Thank you.
I have two questions. Um, one is the follow-up to your question. Um, when we adopted that, we've talked about three, I think, um, professional learning before, before summer started, three days, and then three days just before school starts. That, so this job embedded learning is in addition to those six days?
So I would have to, Mattel, I'd have to get the specific dates that we had regarding those math, um, dates, but we had those set, and those are what we did move forward with. So I would just, I, I, I can't correlate for you off the top of my head which three relate to which ones that we're referencing, but I can certainly get that from Kate and from Julia.
Okay. So there were six days, and this job embedded learning is in addition to the six days, you're thinking?
I, I can't answer. I don't know the answer to that. I'll have to find out.
Okay. All right. That's good. Um, I guess, and the other question is with the student learning, uh, you talked about sixteen hundred or so online credits. Do you know what kind of classes they are that they took?
I do. I have a whole chart of how they're broken down. Um, I can tell you that the majority of, the majority of the classes in the virtual enrollment for credit advancement tend to fall in social studies.
Okay.
So when we look at, we've been studying and talking about as a district, um, where we're seeing students take virtual classes, um, and I think the other piece that comes with that is the responsibility to ask the question, at what cost? Because, um, our virtual classes are classes that are not, um, they're, they aren't Troy teachers, right? That's not the Troy curriculum. It does meet the state's standards. It is an alignment with what is required by the state of Michigan, so students do do, they, they go through all of the steps that are required, but it is not the same as being in a civics experience in a classroom, a social studies classroom. So, um, the majority are social studies, but you'll see, they run the whole gamut. And so, um, Rick's team actually does a really nice job of putting together, um, Tammy, Tammy Brown, um, puts a really, uh, clear, um, chart together of all the enrollment and our summer school classes. I'm happy to share that.
Oh, that, that would be great. Just, just to understand, most of the time, they're taking civics and government classes to get the half credit out of the way so that they can take other classes?
U S history, other, uh, other classes that don't involve a lab, right? So not a lot of sciences because of the lab component of sciences.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Good. Other, go ahead.
I just want to make a general comment. I think it's, you know, going between the slides, it's, it's hard to see it, but we do serve quite a few students over the summer. So I think that's, that's an important, um, note to make. You know, I don't know the exact number, and I'm sure you could probably give us maybe an estimate, but that's just for the virtual enrollment. I'm talking over all of the programs, the, the summer learning lab and, um, for this, you know, for our special needs students, um, for, you know, recovery classes, virtual enrollment, and all the different programs. We do service, um, a significant, significant portion of our student population even during the summer.
Yeah, outside of our virtual program, we, 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 we interact with more than six hundred students, um, that are charted for on these, these slides, and I think that's really incredible. It's, it's, I think, important to know, we don't shutter our doors when the summer comes about, so.
Yeah, the English learner program to me is really exciting because it's the sorts of field trips you can't do during the school year. And for an English learner, like you said, you're in the environment, picking up the language, asking questions, so it looked like that was a great experience for those kids that volunteered to, to be part of that. Um, I wanted to just call out the summer learning lab again. Thank you, Ms. Malanoff, that, uh, for those of us who were able to walk through and, and talk to the students, it was really an exciting day. And, and, um, you know, it came on the heels of us developing the portrait of a graduate document, and I walked through that room and had students literally par, parroting back to me the tenets of our desired portrait. Uh, and when you, and, and while they were talking about it, they were talking about how much they loved learning this way and how that they wished that we could bring more of this aspect of learning into our everyday classes. So it was a reinforcement that the direction we're moving, the, the, the focus on the, the tenets that we talked about are the right way to go, and what a fantastic way to see that is with this joyous learning in front of you with all of those students. So I know it's a lot of work, it's a lot of students, and I'm really happy to hear that we're doing it again. We've got funding for next year, but, um, we can't do it without the hard work of people like you. So, you know, thank you for your efforts there. Um, I do have a question for you. You may be able to answer this. I think you gave us the number. What was our total number, the cost of all of our summer programs? And I don't know if that included the grant that ran summer learning.
No, we just looked at, we just looked at the learning one. I think, and I forget how much it was. It was sustainable.
It was sustainable for one more.
It was sustainable.
One more. And then, then in terms of, um, do you know, uh, how much of our other programming was funded by, um, S R, non-recurring federal money from COVID?
I do not, off, off the top of my head. That, that analysis will be done as we continue to look at programming for, for next summer and what funds we have available to us. Um, that work will, that work will be ongoing throughout this school year.
I mean, I, I think our challenge as a board is we, what we see here is what we want to continue doing, right? And it's really hard when we know that some of this cool work was done because we had non-recurring federal funds that showed up. So from our perspective from a government's level, it's helpful for us to know, you know, where do we need, how much money do we need to find in order to continue to service our students the way we were able to the last two summers? Because the work you've done is spectacular. So it's, uh, we don't want to have to say, sorry, we can't do that. Someone turned off the faucet, right? So, great. Any other questions or comments about this? Thank you, Christine. Okay. We have, okay, uh, business. Yeah, we have no business. That may be, is that the first time ever in my twelve years? We don't have a business item. Um, uh, public communication on non-agenda items. We have one speaker, um, Alex Karpowitz, um, and, um, you've been before, so you know, three minutes. Um, uh, let us know if you have some, uh, student in the district, and Dr. Wilson will let you know when you're hitting thirty seconds and fifteen seconds.
Good evening. So I'm wondering, have you guys considered live streaming the meetings? Because as much as I enjoy lugging all of that, it would be great. I think the community would really appreciate it if you could livestream the board meetings, because that way the district can, uh, along with its Facebook posts, uh, show that the community, show to the community that, um, attendance and interest of these, uh, for these meetings is something that's accessible, just making it more accessible to the public. Is that something that you would be interested in pursuing?
This is, it's not a dialogue. It's a chance for you to offer comments to the, to the board.
Well, that's kind of a choice, because you are an elected official, so here's a chance for you to speak to your electorate, is it not? So you don't wish to speak to your electorate?
This is not the forum for that.
So what would be the forum to speak to the electorate if not a board meeting? Can you answer that question?
This is not a dialogue. This is an opportunity. You have three minutes to address the board.
You choose to not make it a dialogue. It can be a dialogue if you want to. It's clear, you guys can choose to engage in a dialogue, but it seems like you're very concerned with managing your image as opposed to actually engaging people, members of the public, unless it's in a very defined, narrow channel where you can explicitly craft exactly what you want. So here is an opportunity to engage with the public, but it seems that you're not interested in doing that, so that's fine. So the next thing I'd like to bring to the board's attention is the scores for the S A T. And I guess the first question I have is, has the board discussed the recent publishing of scores for both M S E P and the S A T, along with, in conjunction with the administration, since it was released a month ago? You can't answer that question. You can't answer if the board has discussed with the administration the performance of the district? Okay. So here's another question for you. Do these look like world-class S A T scores to you?
You have thirty seconds, sir.
Okay. It's clear what this word really believes, so thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, and we have other. Under other, we have consideration. First is consideration, uh, certification of the Troy School District Board delegates to the M A S B twenty-twenty-three Delegate Assembly. Delegates to the Michigan Association of School Board's Annual Leadership Conference must be certified by the Board of Education to act as its representatives, allowing them to make motions and vote on issues at the M A S B twenty-twenty-three Delegate Assembly during the M A S B Annual Conference, November ninth through twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. The Delegate Assembly will be held on Thursday, November ninth at seven P M. Uh, may I have a resolution, please? Ms. Anay?
Be therefore resolved that the Troy Board of Education hereby certifies that Nicole Wilson and Carl Smith will serve as the delegates to the M A S B twenty-twenty-three Delegate Assembly on November ninth, twenty-twenty-three. Matt Hopp will serve as an alternate to the Delegate, Delegate Assembly.
Support. A resolution by, uh, Ms. Anay, supported by Mr. Hopt. Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. Okay. Uh, ten B, consideration of the twenty-twenty-four National School Board Association Advocacy, Advocacy Institute. As required by Board Policy one thousand point zero one, organization and functioning of the Board, reimbursement of expenses, quote, "Any expenditure of district funds for members for out-of-state meetings must have prior approval by resolution," unquote. A delegate of no more than three Troy School Board members will attend the twenty-twenty-four National School Board Association's Advocacy Institute, which will be held in Washington, D C, from January twentieth through thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Um, therefore, the Board is being asked to consider the following resolution. So I will speak to this and just say that, um, this is our opportunity to lobby directly for, uh, federal funds with our elected officials in Washington, D C, is what this is. Mr. Hopt?
Be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education takes action to approve a delegation of no more than three board members as representatives of the Troy Board of Education at the twenty-twenty-four N S B A Advocacy Institute in Washington, D C, from January twenty-eighth through thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Support. A resolution by Mr. Hopt, supported by Dr. Philipart. Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Thank you. And last, we have the N S B A Annual Conference in New Orleans. So this is the National School Board Annual Conference for Public Education Leaders. Again, as required by Board Policy one thousand point zero one, organization and functioning of the Board, reimbursement of expenses, uh, quote, "Any expenditure of district funds for members for out-of-state meetings must have prior approval by resolution," unquote. A delegate of no more than four Troy, Troy School Board members will attend the National School Board Association Annual Conference for Public Education Leaders, which will be held in New Orleans, Louisiana, from April sixth through eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Therefore, the Board is being asked to consider the following resolution. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Alish?
Be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education takes action to approve a delegation of more than, no more than four board members as representatives of the Troy Board of Education at the twenty-twenty-four N S B A Annual Conference for Public Education Leaders in New Orleans, Louisiana, from April sixth to the eighth, twenty-twenty-four.
I have a resolution, resolution by Ms. Alish, supported by Dr. Wilson. Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. Okay. So for my student reps, this is a chance for you to, to bring us up to speed on what's happening in your buildings. Uh, and then after that, we'll kind of find out, uh, any other comments from our board members up here. Um, so why don't we start with Teagan, and you can tell us what's happening so far in, uh, over at T C C, and then we'll drill you with tough questions.
All right. Um, okay. Over at T C C, we are excited to report that clubs and activities are off to a great start and flourishing this year. Students are involved in our community and their futures now more than ever. Starting this year off strong, we'll have our first book club meeting this Thursday. Our first book being The Picture of Dorian Gray by Oscar Wilde. Our business math class is working together to design and produce our school spirit wear. Um, students interested in plants are working hard to take care of our school's greenhouse, growing flowers and learning about ecology. Uh, the climate changers are a collection of staff and students meeting once a week, providing a safe space for students' voices to be heard and used to make impactful changes to our building. Um, currently, we have six students enrolled at O C C balancing their high school courses and ten early college courses. Uh, we also have twelve students expressing interest to enroll in the winter semester. Um, we also are excited to share the start of our second A P course. A P Language and Literature is off to a great start with a class of twenty phenomenal students. Um, this is just the beginning for our bright minds over at T C C. Uh, we are excited for what's to come for the rest of the fall semester. Thank you.
All right. So a couple of questions. The first is, where did this greenhouse thing come from? So tell us about the greenhouse.
That was, uh, I think, our wonderful Ms. Letter. Um, she was our, I think, I wasn't at the old building, but I think she was physics and, uh, physics teacher, and then we had a bit of a shortage, so she jumped over to biology for us, and I kind of was there when she was learning her bi, biology stuff, so we kind of learned side by side with that, and, uh, she's really grown into that role. This is the biology teacher. Um, she's fond of students that love biology just as much as she is, so they kind of all got this idea together last year and decided that, hey, if we can, if we can get the grant for it, let's get a greenhouse and let's grow some plants and.
So you got a grant? Okay. Did the students help build it?
Yes, absolutely. That was, um, I was in a wood shop class taught by Mr. Flessa. Uh, we helped with a little bit of that, but Ms. Leonard was very adamant about, let us do this ourselves. Like, we, we should, uh, all learn how to do this. She thought it was a pretty important skill for the.
Yeah.
Biology students to learn. So I think it's a great thing, and I think a lot of people are really buying into this, and, um, a lot of them stay after school sometimes to take care of it, or, I don't know if we had any students come by there over the summer to plant some plants, but, yeah.
So you, things are growing in it?
Yeah, absolutely. It's very green out there.
All right. That's kind of right. All right. And then this, um, this spirit wear you're talking about, I already put my order in, but, uh, when, when is that going to be ready?
Um, November, it's early November, November first. Okay. Um, I'm kind of staying out of that. I'm not really involved in that too much, but.
So we couldn't, like, the board couldn't place the order with you then, or anything?
But Ms. G, she's our teacher leading that. Um, I don't really know where the idea of business math came from, but, um, apparently, it's just the other thing. It's just, they came up with the idea. They found students that are really interested in it, and they're, they're doing a great job of finding these courses that students are going to love, and they're spot on. They're just bullseye every time.
Okay. Cool.
Yeah.
All right. Great. Any other questions?
I have a question, Teagan. Is this the very first A P class that is being offered?
The second one. Last year, we had, uh, A P Art History, and, um, this year, we're doing, uh, Mr. Flessa, last year, he taught Art History with a select group of students, and this year, he selected a few more, and last year, we kind of, he has options of what courses he would be interested in teaching and, or options that he could or wanted to, and he let us kind of choose what we thought would be the most helpful for our futures. Um, gave us the choice of what A P courses to take, and, um, he kind of picked the next batch of students to follow in behind us.
Are you enrolled in it?
Yep. I was in both.
Excited? Nice. Thank you.
Are you guys doing passion projects again this year?
Um, I don't think we're going to be doing passion projects for, like, throughout the school days, but obviously, if it's. but obviously if a student has a passion project they want to do, I'm very flexible with allowing students to work on that during school days or work it into the curriculum for the student.
Okay, great. Thanks, Teagan.
Welcome.
Marlene.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'd just like to echo what Teagan said, that the clubs and activities are off to a really great start this year. And not only that, but I've seen a lot of teachers taking on a very dynamic approach to learning this year. For instance, I know the human geo teacher, she took her students, like, the Upper West Deck, and she actually had printed on sheets of paper the map of the world, and they put it together like a puzzle. So that's been very cool to see. And we also, in our AP research course, as you all know, the students pick a project to work on for the entire year. And this year, I think it's very cool that Mr. Burden wants to get involved with that, and he's allowing students to pitch their idea to him. So lots of student-staff engagement, which I love to see. In terms of our clubs and activities, as you all know, this week is Hoka Week, and we're looking forward to the big parade on Friday that is not only being held by the student government, but also in conjunction with Athens Project Lead. We have, I believe, over forty groups that will be participating this year. And we also, we use the Homecoming Parade as an opportunity for parents to get to see the different groups that we have at our schools, that incoming freshmen can learn about these different groups. We do have a club fair in the fall, but I think it's really nice for parents to see that we have all these different groups and to know that their kids can be a part of something like this, too. Talking more into specifics, we have our Athens Science Olympia Team. They are currently preparing to host a regional conference at Athens. It's an annual conference called Hawks and Hornet, and that's in November. The Athens Theatre Company is also working on the play that will also be this upcoming November. Athens Key Club actually had a dinner at Carrabba's this week where we worked with Judson Center, which is a nonprofit that helps to put children in foster care and find adoptive parents, so we help them package necessities for kids. In addition, we also have the HOZA and Model UN teams, and they're working on recruiting incoming freshmen and helping them choose their events. HOZA and Model UN, as you know, it's a lot of, like, it's a big commitment outside of school, and like, we have a lot of staff members that work one-on-one with coaching these students, and even our forensics teams. I know the librarian works with one of our English teachers, Mr. Atsima, and they do, like, open sessions with students, practicing their public speaking skills, so just overall, lots of exciting things happening in the new year.
Great. Any questions from Marlene? None, okay. All right, thank you for that summary. We'll move to Jayla on Troy High.
All right, we have a little bit of a mic situation.
Oh, we have a mic situation. Oh, no. She will not be silenced.
Well, hi. My name is Jayla Turner. I am a senior at Troy High School. Thank you for having me here tonight. Our school year has been off to a very great start. For starters, you guys heard a little bit about our new hires. They've been phenomenal this year, and it's really nice having so many new faces and just being hands-on. If you guys don't know, we are three and one for football, you know, so...
There was a rumor, yeah.
Just seeing, like, the new staff take initiative and just be hands-on, coming to, like, even talk to the cheerleaders or just meet the football players or just come be a part of, like, our school spirit has been just great. It's so different this year, and it's been great. We started our year off with Colts Care Week. It's, this year, it was the first two weeks. We actually tried something new this week, I mean, this year. We had a donut truck come during lunch. And we're hoping to do that, so we heard from Little Birdie that Rochester schools bring them once a month. So, you know, we're going to have to talk about that, guys.
That's a building decision. We have nothing to do with that, okay.
So I'm hoping to bring them back. They actually give ten percent back to our school. And we also have a mental health summit coming up for students in leadership or just people who have shown interest. We have a mental health week further in the year, and it just helps us, like, see what other schools are doing. It's just a really good way to connect and try new things. And then we also have a No Place for Hate Summit coming up, and it's very similar to the Mental Health Summit. It's just focused on inclusion and diversity. And then we also have dodgeball. I don't know if you guys know about our annual dodgeball. This year, our fundraiser is PAL. It is Pontiac Athletically, so similar to Troy Cowboys, if you guys are familiar. They, like, people fundraise and they donate money, and all, like, little kids in Pontiac who are interested in playing sports get to play for free any sport that they offer. And that'll be in November, and then Homecoming is coming up soon. We play Berkeley, and that'll be a great game. We have our pep assembly. We're going to try something new this year. We feel that sometimes students don't, like, if you're just kind of in the stands, you, like, it's really hard to, like, pull from the crowd. Like, we have a lot of kids that go there, so we're going to let people, like, sign up and volunteer to be involved in, like, all of our games and stuff like that, just to, just include everyone, make sure everyone gets their spotlight, have some fun.
That's great.
Have our, what else do we have? Our parade. We have, so far, signed up, we have around fifty clubs and sports signed up. I think it'll be great. We're going to be missing Ms. DiPlato. And also, we're currently continuing our mentorship program. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Mr. Hubertie. His program, he runs the cognitive impairment classroom, and, like, our kids are, like, we love them. Unified basketball, that's our thing. We love that. So we're, like, this year, we have a lot of students who are super interested in, like, playing and just being more involved with them. And our Student to Student Club is also, like, getting really big because we just love hanging out with them, like, love it. So that's really all that we've got going on, so, yes.
It's a lot. Good. Any questions for Jayla? Go ahead.
I do. So it's not about the report, but in your bio, it mentioned the peer mediation program, and I was really interested to find out what that program is, and I don't know if it's only at Troy High, but if you could at least speak to that program at Troy High.
Okay, so we have a lot of students who sometime get into, like, small arguments, and, like, a lot of the freshmen have, like, just, like, literally small issues, or, like, if someone doesn't like someone or someone's not getting along, or just a teacher sees something or a fan sees something. Mr. Frager, who is also our head football coach, he is in charge of that program, along with Ms. Morse. You essentially, like, just report, like, an issue just before it goes to admin and becomes a fight, because a lot of, like, small things turn into larger things. If you're having, like, we have a crew at lunch. We have, I think, eight or ten mediators. It's also a class, so they go and, like, if you're sitting by yourself at lunch or, like, you're a new student, they'll come sit with you, they'll talk to you. When we have new students to our new Detroit or, like, starting in the middle of the year, they'll tour you around the school, like, get to ask one-on-one questions. And it's just really, like, to help, like, especially, like, assist with administration, just to kind of make their job a little easier, too, just for stuff like that.
There's another question. Go ahead.
Yes, one follow-up. How many students are in this peer mediation team?
So it's an open club. I'm really not sure how many people, like, are outside of head mediators, but I think we have close to twenty head mediators that, so we have two per hour throughout the day. So we also help, like, just if you need, like, to move some books or something like that, we'll also, like, come do that. You can, like, request our services, too. But I think there's around twenty head mediators, but we do trainings for our underclassmen. Just, it's something that, like, you want to be, like, you get selected by admin, counselors, just like the whole staff, and they recommend you for, like, the position. And, but, like, as an underclassman, like, you go to the training, like, we host trainings during the school day throughout the year, and smaller field trips and, like, leadership type things, just to, like, create just community around it.
One fun question. What do the students think of the improvements in the football field and everything?
Oh, we're loving it. We have, like...
You were milking her for compliments, is that what you were...
We appreciate it, especially, our new gym, too, like...
And the gym.
Our bleachers are fire. Like, when you sit on them, like, you're just automatically going to know we're going to win.
Oh, I didn't, yeah. Teagan, you had a question. Go ahead.
What's the workload look like for this peer mediation group? Like, how much active, like, activity do you get from students outside of it asking for your guys' help?
So it's kind of, just depending on how you look at it. A lot of people don't think that we do anything, but it's also a confident, like, we're not allowed to tell anyone. It's confidential. But we have a lot of students, especially underclassmen, who struggle with, like, confrontation and just problem-solving skills. So a decent amount, like, come to us, and we get a lot of input from teachers or just, like, emails, like, hey, like, this happened in my class today. Can you just talk to them about this? Or even if Safe Ed sees something on, like, the cameras or at lunch, like, they'll come ask us to, like, either for details about it, like, if we've heard something, or just, like, even if, like, we sit in with admin, like, just as, like, a student support.
So what about you personally? About how many hours a month are you engaged in some kind of mediation activity?
The start of the school year. There hasn't been...
Well, like, last year. Like, you did it all last year?
So being a head mediator is only for seniors, so you can only be in the class if you're a senior. But when the seniors left last year, I did around three mediations, like, towards, like, June. Like, it wasn't a ton, but there's also a large amount of us, so I can't, like, speak...
Yeah, I just wondered for you personally, how many hours of commitment it is.
You get pulled out of, like, different classes. Like, it just depends on, like, the situation. We all bring different skills to the table. Some people, like, want to talk to, like, different, like, some people want to speak to others than, like, who's put in the room originally, so...
All right, good. Any other questions? All right, good. Thank you all, and I'm looking forward to, to having you with us for the rest of the year. When we're going to do, we'll go around the table here, but at the very end of the meeting, if you can come on over to camera two over here, I want to talk to the three of you and just kind of, we'll kind of talk about the expectations for the year and that kind of stuff, and answer any questions that you might have. Okay, but in the meantime, we'll go to Dr. Philip Hart.
Well, just quickly, it's really gratifying to hear that school is off to a good start. Thank you to our student reps. Sounds like, you know, the buildings, you know, are just running full force, not only with academics, but all of the other clubs and sports and things that really contribute to, you know, the robustness of the education in Troy. I did want to acknowledge that the Troy Foundation for Educational Excellence, we are also kicking off next week. We're going to be doing a strategy session. And it's really spending our time, you know, we had a successful golf outing in June, so we raised some money. And, you know, one of the things that the TFEE does is provide the grant opportunities to do some of the kind of enrichment things that, you know, teachers in your building are able to do. In fact, I'm thinking TFEE may have funded some of your greenhouse. I don't know that for sure, but they may have. And so we're excited to, we have some new leadership in the, in the association and some new board members. And anytime you have some new blood in the organization, you get some, you know, new thoughts, new perspectives, some creativity. So we're looking forward to having that strategy session so that we can be more effective in terms of how we support and enrich, you know, the Troy educational experience. So I'll keep you posted as that develops, but we're excited to, you know, have our first formal meeting of the board, of the TFEE board in our strategy session.
Cool. Mr. Hopt.
I would also like to thank the reps for coming today and doing this and volunteering. It's really awesome just to hear your perspective on what's going on in the schools, and you give a lot of information, which is really great. So thank you for doing that. Also, no homecoming, as you mentioned, is coming up, so I just want to wish everybody a safe and fun homecoming weekend, and I'll be at the, hopefully, both of the football games, so...
Great.
Well, this, I echo a thing, but I do want to add one thing, though. Just, I heard in the news that, for example, Michigan State Legislature has designated some holidays associated with various religious and diverse groups that are in the state of Michigan, so I was wondering if we could try and do something like that in the, in our district as well and recognize that we have a diverse group of students and families and maybe do something similar in our district, too.
Great. Salish?
I just want to welcome everybody to the new school year. And I do want to echo what Vital also just said, and I've brought this up at other meetings as well. We don't have a calendar set for next year yet, so as, as we, as we do the work of getting there, and it's, you know, it's a joint effort, it's, it's about time that our, our school calendar reflects the diversity of our, of our community. And also, it would, I think, be good to take into account parent feedback as well as we do that. And then I'm looking forward to attending Athens Homecoming this Friday. As a, as a board member, I will apparently be on a float, so that's going to be...
Oh, no, you'd be in a Jeep or a convertible, yeah.
Or something, but...
Gripping the seat with your toes as they accelerate you.
Break in, yeah. And then I did want to bring something up, and this happened the first week of school due to a domestic incident around Troy High. There was a soft lockdown, so it was nothing that was happening within our own schools. But I do want to, we, we, we do our part here, and the district really has done a lot of work to keep our students safe. But it's also a community effort. So I want to ask, you know, whoever might be listening to this, I want to ask parents to keep an eye on their kids. If they have firearms in the home, to keep an eye on, on the firearms. I think that also goes, you know, it's connected with Suicide Prevention Month as well. So I just want to say, we all want our kids to be safe. The district is, 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 is doing its job on that front, but it's a community effort, so, yeah.
Great. Mr. Hopt.
Thank you. Earlier this board meeting, we, we, as a board, recognized the MASB awards to several of our trustees. Ms. Sane with the Award of Distinction and President Schmidt with the Master Platinum Award. These are awards that are given based on hard work and dedicated time that takes us trustees away from home to a specific location to learn more about our craft here at the board table. And that is not to be taken lightly, because it does take a lot of work, takes a lot of time, and it, the rewards are innumerable when it comes to turning them over to how we work on student achievement. And of course, Dr. Philip Hart with the President's Award of Recognition. It takes a thousand, thirteen hundred hours of education credits and advanced-level courses. I salute you for the hard work. I know what it takes. I've got one myself.
Hey, I followed in your footsteps.
It does take a lot of work. We've, we are fortunate to have several board members, past, present, and hopefully in the future, that will achieve this President's Award, because it does turn over to higher, higher levels of thinking and higher levels of future student achievement. But the time that Dr. Philip Hart and Ms. Sane and Mr. Schmidt has taken to get these awards should be applauded and not taken lightly, because it does pay off for our district. It's an investment in the future. That's all I have right now.
Okay. Dr. Wilson.
Echo things that other people have said, but also just shout out to all the teachers for all the effort getting the school year off the ground and excelling, and especially, I know there's a lot of extra nights at the beginning of the school year with open houses and curriculum nights and all of that. And so just thank you to all of our teachers who do a great job welcoming families into the building and making parents feel like they have a good sense of what's going on in their child's education. And so I just want to thank our administrators, teachers, everybody who has worked. I know everyone works overtime this first month of the year, so thank you to everybody who's doing that to get us off... to, to get us off the ground running.
Great. Mr. West?
Yes, a few things. I just reiterate, we are off to an excellent start attested by our students and the rest of our board. We're out and about and we see it. Dr. Macheska on August 22 challenged all of us to create a sense of belonging. And you can see through the three student reports, that's, that's off and running. And I would imagine if we had the other seventeen schools represented here tonight, we would have similar reports. So we are excited about that. We're excited about that vision and the mission and the work that goes along with that. And, and I appreciate all the students' reports attesting to the fact that it's actually occurring. So the elementary open houses and secondary curriculum nights are off and running as well. I think many of them have been completed and a couple will be completed over the next month or so. So our reports are that those are all going well. We did have three hundred and fifty students about, students and staff from our categorical programs attend Troy dates, or I believe it's called Big Event now. And Mrs. Young was reporting to us at Cabinet yesterday. It's really the highlight of their, their, their year. The excitement that's generated from it is, is awesome and they just had a great time out there. Address a couple of things that came up here on the roundtable. There is a community survey. Mrs. Montante is finalizing a draft and for our review and to be sent out in the next couple of weeks regarding the school calendar. We do want to, we do wanna get the community input on what a preferred calendar and a preferred future looks like. So that survey is in draft form and we are looking to get that out over the course of the next couple of weeks. And that will be out for, for a couple of weeks in duration to allow for appropriate time to respond. So that is important for any community watching or that will watch. And please push that word once it comes out. We are genuine in our desire to have, to have feedback and a representative calendar. Mrs. DiPlato highlighted these a little bit, but to emphasize, our bond is, is going strong. We are ten months removed from the election and we have been ongoing with work regarding design in those, the areas that she mentioned. The playgrounds at Barnard, Bemis Hill, Martell, Morse, Troy Union. We're furniture, we're piloting furniture at Costello, Hamilton, Leonard, Schroeder, Wossen, Waddles. Our high school athletics, the exterior facilities are under design and we're excited to continue that work. And then, of course, the hallmark of it all was the Smith Middle School design. And the board has had opportunities to check in on that project and that design process. And we are, we're excited to, to break ground in, in early spring on that. You mentioned community safety. I actually had an opportunity yesterday to meet with Attorney General Dana Nessel as well as the Chief of Police and the mayor, Representative McDonald. It was actually coordinated by Representative McDonald's office. And Todd Gilovich, our new safety and security director, and I were invited over there to, to meet with them in Rich's absence. And we had, we had good dialogue. It was very interesting to hear of the programs coming out of the AG's office and the community safety. She was most interested in the chief's, chief's perspective on some of those programs, but we did have an opportunity to share with her the, some of the things that we were able to do. And there was an emphasis on this, you know, safety is a community effort and, and we have to partner together. So I was excited about that dialogue. And then last, we are going to, Dr. Macheski and our administration will be out and about over the next couple of months to do our fall presentations. That is also in draft form. Mrs. Montante is, is hard at work in her first couple of months and we appreciate all those efforts. And we will look forward to engaging our staff and PTOs over the next couple of months.
Okay, great. I just have a couple of things. I wanna call out Kendra Montante, if you wanna wave. Off and running, crazy time of year to start this job. There's so much communication in the beginning of the year. And I just have to say, I've been impressed by the quality and quantity you've been able to produce coming on board. So a little applause for you because I know that was, that's been rough. There was a question and public comment about M-Step. And I will say, M-Step scores are always frustrating for, for school districts because the, the state releases them to the public before they release them to the school district. So we never have an opportunity to actually explore scores and understand what's going on before we have the public looking at them going, okay, is this bad? Is it good? We don't really know. One of the things that I did for the board when the scores came out is I said, okay, we need to look at some kind of standardization across these. So I looked at the M-Step scores for third through eighth grade for the last four years, or three years. I think I showed the last three years. And I, I converted the scores into percentile scores. So we understand how are we doing relative to all other districts in the state of Michigan. And the scores, grade by grade, year by year, ranged from ninety-fourth percentile to ninety-seventh percentile, which means we're doing between, we're doing better than between ninety-four and ninety-seven percent of the other school districts in the state of Michigan. And if you look over the last three years, you'll see that percentile score in some cases goes up by a point or two, goes down by a point or two. But we're really maintaining our scores at the top of the, of the pile here in terms of Michigan. So we have a lot more detail that we're gonna be exploring. And I think we'll be going into our workshops in the next couple of months to really dig in and start looking at things at a district level. So there are ways that we'll use those scores. But I just wanted to let the general public know that, that we're essentially, our scores are coming in about where they normally do for the last several years compared to other districts. That is not a lie. It's absolutely true. Honor, Honor Board, sir, 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 sir! This is not your meeting. This is not your meeting and it's not a lie. I said grades three through eight.
Right, address high school.
I haven't even seen high school scores yet.
Well, then you're not good at your job.
The other thing I wanna talk about is, and we were talking about the, the awards that were here. And I wanna talk about the Honor Board Award for the, for the board itself because we have less than ten percent of the five hundred school boards in the state that qualify for Honor Board. And that requires that everybody on the board has completed all the first level courses, which represent, it's ten three-hour courses that you have to take. Normally, that it's, that's a low bar for this board. We, we hit it every year. But when you have new members that come on board, essentially what the, the Michigan Associated School, of school boards only gives us six months for, for those scores to happen. So our two new members were able to achieve thirty hours of, of training in the first six months on the job in order for us to maintain that Honor Board status. So that's, that's a lot of work and you're both full-time working. One, one was studying for the bar at the time. And, you know, so I, I just wanna say, we, and I told both of you, you don't have to do this. That we have, you know, from a, from a board perspective, we have an expectation that everybody complete those first ten courses in the first twelve months. And, and if that meant that, that, you know, we lost Honor Board status for a year, that's okay because we knew that you were working towards that. So I really do appreciate that both of you stepped up and squeaked through all those courses by the end of June. So I wanna thank you for that because that, you know, yeah, some of the other people here like me, we've accumulated points, but we're old. So we've been doing this for a while. So you accumulate, but you had to, you know, buckle down in six months and, and find the time to get that coursework done. So I really do appreciate that. And I think the community should really appreciate that, that, that you, you earn their trust at this point. Because you promised when you came aboard, you were gonna take the job seriously. And that's certainly a strong demonstration that you're taking your responsibilities very seriously. So thank you for that. We appreciate that as a board. Okay, I think that's it. I don't think of anything else other than the dates, which I never remember. So workshop is October
Third.
Third at six PM in the administration building. And then the October meeting then would be the seventeenth, correct? Back here at seven PM?
Yep.
Did I miss anything?
I think you're good.
Okay, all right, good. Then we're adjourned, class dismissed. And then if my student reps could come over here, Dr. Wilson and I will talk to you about a little thing, a couple things. Thank you.